Good evening, everyone. It is Monday, June 17th, 2024, and I'll call to order the meeting of the Licensing Board. We have several items on our agenda tonight. Our first one is approval of two different meeting minutes. Our first one is regular meeting minutes for May 20th, 2024.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Butchlick and Alderman Zingchime. Any comments, questions, corrections? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Our next one is the regular meeting minutes from the Licensing Board on June 3rd, 2024.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Butchlick and Zingchime. Any comments, questions, corrections? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. We have several license renewals on the list, and I talked to Chief before our meeting tonight. Lieutenant McAndrews has gone through all of these, has vetted them all, and recommends approval as listed in our packets. And so I guess we need to take these one by one. So we'll have several motions here tonight, but the first one, I will move to approve item number three, the Class A Combo Liquor License Renewals 2024 to 2025. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Zingchime. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. The second one, I'll move to approve, Class B Combo Liquor and Reserve License Renewals for 2425. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Butchlick. Any comments, questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Our number five, Class B Beer Liquor License Renewal 2425. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Butchlick, Alderman Zingchime. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Our next one is Class B Beer and Class C Wine License Renewal 2425. I'll move to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Zingchime for the second. Any comments, questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Our next one is the Scrap Dealer License Renewal for 2425.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Zingchime and Butchlick. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Number eight, Massage License Renewals for 2425.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Butchlick, Alderman Zingchime. Any comments, questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Number nine, Amusement Arcade License Renewals for 2425.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Zingchime, Alderman Butchlick. Any comments, questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Our number 10, Amusement Device License Renewals 2425. I'll move to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Zingchime. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Number 11, Secondhand Jewelry Dealer License Renewals 2425.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Butchlick, Alderman Zingchime. Any comments, questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Our last one is Class B Combo Liquor License New Owners 2425.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Butchlick and Alderman Zingchime. Any comments, questions, discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries. Thank you. That's the end of our Licensing Board, and we will be adjourned.
I would like to call the order. The Board of Public, City of West Bend, Board of Public Works, I have seven items on the agenda. Item number one, approval of minutes of the regular meeting, June 3rd, 2024.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions or corrections? There are none. We have motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. Item number two, Stormwater Maintenance Agreement, W 24-03, Marine Park Technical College. Good evening, Max.
Good evening. Thank you. This item is for approval of a stormwater maintenance agreement. For Marine Park Technical College, this is the usual agreement that we come to you for approval every time development is issued a stormwater management permit. In this case, it's for 37,000 square foot building addition on the campus, and also construction of a bioretention basin in order to handle the stormwater from the development. So this is our typical agreement that we have to enter into with the property owner in order to be in compliance with our DNR MS4 permit. You've seen the template several times before today, and we recommend approval of this agreement, which will ensure that the property owner will build and maintain the improvement so they can function as intended in the future.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Sternig?
Motion to approve.
And Alderman Allen. Any questions for Max? There are no questions. We have a motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. Item number three, Stormwater Maintenance Agreement, W 23-05, F Street North Lot. Max?
Thank you again. This is the same type of item, and this is for the F Street development. This development was done in two parts, one part north of Water Street and the other part south of Water Street between Forest Avenue and Indiana Avenue. So this portion is the North Lot, which is the redevelopment of an existing parking lot, which will now host residential building. The site has a reduction of impervious surface and addition of green area, so this is a fairly simple agreement, and it is the same type of purpose, which is meeting our compliance with our DNR MS4 permit. So we recommend approval of this agreement.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion. John and Mary?
Second.
Okay. All right. Any questions for Max? There are none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carry. Item number four, Stormwater Maintenance Agreement, W 23-06, F Street South Lot.
Thank you. So this is for the second portion of the F Street development. This site is on the south side of Water Street, and it was the redevelopment of the former West Bend Transit Site in that location. Same thing, residential buildings, parking area, landscaping, and underground stormwater retention system on this one, which is subject of this agreement, and we recommend approval of this agreement as well.
Motion?
Second.
Alderman Spurts and Alderman?
Bill?
Joe?
Bill?
Any questions? There are none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. Thank you, Max.
Thank you.
We have item number five, Ridge Run Jim and Ann White Family Cabin Renovations, Bid Rejection. Good evening.
Good evening, and thank you. This evening, our department is recommending rejection of the one bid that we received for the renovation of the cabin. The pre-bid estimate for this project was $84,000, and again, as a reminder to council, this project is being paid for by an anonymous donor donations. So the pre-bid estimate was at $84,000. We were working with the architect on this project to help us put our specifications together and things like that. The one bid we did receive came in around $150,000. That one bidder, I just wanted to mention, is a great contractor. They do great work. We'd be happy to work with them on this project or other projects, just not at the $150,000 mark. That contractor, along with the other contractors we spoke with, they're busy. They're just, they're crazy busy. Some of the contractors didn't even have time to put a bid together and things like that. The timeline we had was completion of March of 2025. We thought that would be enough for them. Nope, it's not. We would look at sometimes spring of 2025 to get this work done. That's just how busy these contractors are. Rick Fox, our project manager, has already contacted several contractors and said they would be interested in this project, just not within our timeline. A lot of them are a year, they're booked a year out, things like that. So this contract, it's not a large renovation. It's a 90-day contract. It's, we're not asking for a lot. We're renovating a three-seasons cabin is what we're doing and adding a deck around it. Not that large of a project. It's just, they're busy. That's the fact. So that's why our department is recommending that we reject that one bid, and then we move forward with working with the contractors. It would be the same bid package. They can give us a number and their timeline. That way, it'll work a little bit better for them, for us, and we can still work it into our schedule, our rental schedule and things like that for 2025. Thank you.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the rejection.
Okay. Alderman Sternig and Alderman Schultz?
Schmidt.
Schmidt. Any questions for Mike? There are none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. Thank you, Mike. Item number six, Resolution Approving the 2023 Compliance Maintenance Annual Report to the City of West Bend Sewer Utility. Good evening, Steve.
Good evening. Tonight, I have the 2023 Compliance Maintenance Annual Report. This is an annual report required by the DNR. Purpose of this is to give the governing body some insight as to how the sewer utility was operating within the last year. So within the report, we received As in all sections. Because of that, the DNR doesn't require any further action besides the approval of the resolution.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Any questions for Steve? There are none. We have a motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Item number seven, Ordinance Remumbering Subchapter 2 of Chapter 13 and Creating Section 13-10, 13.10, entitled Lead Service Line Replacement. Good evening, Travis.
Thank you, John. I'm here tonight to present an ordinance for lead service line replacements that we would like adopted in Chapter 13 of the Municipal Code. Lead Service Line Replacement Ordinance will help the water utility implement a lead lateral replacement program, which will mandate this removal of lead laterals from the water main to the meter. Both the WDNR and EPA are seeking to revise the regulations that will require the removal and replacement of these lead laterals from our municipal water supply in the next 10 years or possibly less. The adoption of this ordinance is crucial to not only help us enforce and remove all the lead in the city, but this will also help us comply with all the forthcoming regulations. We recently passed a resolution to accept grant money from Washington County, which will help fund the removal of several sections of lead service lines in the city. More important, the opportunity of securing additional grants with the state of Wisconsin will be contingent upon passage of this ordinance. The water utility strongly urges you, the council, to help us in the removal of lead service laterals by adopting the presented ordinance.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Sternig and Alderman Schmidt. Any questions for Travis? There are none. We have a motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. Thank you, Travis. Being no further business before the Board of Public Works, I adjourn as chair.
The Finance Committee is called to order. We have three items on the agenda this evening. The first is the approval of minutes from the regular meeting, May 20th, 2024. Can I entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Burquist and Butchlick. Are there any questions, comments, or omissions? If not, those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Second item for consideration is a 2023 Audit Presentation.
Hello. Good evening. Thanks for your time. My name is Andrea Jansen, and I am the Principal in Charge of the City's Audit with Baker Tilly. So for our time together, I was just going to make a couple of brief comments on the formal audit reports, and then we'll take a look at the numbers with this 2023 financial highlights. So the first, the largest report is the City's Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, which contains your financial statements for the year. As a reminder, the city does participate in the GFOA Award Program, Certificate Award Program. So for 2022, you did receive the award recognition, and that was the fifth consecutive award that you received for this program, and I believe Kerry will be submitting later this month for 2023 as well. So with that award program, in addition to the regular financial statements, there are also some, there's additional information to help provide more context around your financial statements, and that is in the introduction section in the beginning and the statistical section at the end. So if you've not read through this report, I would at least recommend looking at those sections. There's a lot of interesting information there about the city's financials. And then probably of importance to you is the Independent Auditor's Report is the, really the piece of the report that we do. It is in the front section of the report on Roman numeral page nine. We were able to issue an unmodified opinion on the city's financial statements, which is the highest level of assurance that we're able to give otherwise known as a clean opinion. So this is what you've received in previous years as well. So happy to report that we were able to issue that unmodified opinion. Also, in the opinion, you will find that the city implemented a new accounting standard this year, GASB 96, which is related to subscription-based IT arrangements. So those are becoming more and more common with use of technology. So the GASB Accounting Standards Board added some regulations there, and so there's new disclosures and information related to those agreements. The other formal report that we issue as part of the audit is the Reporting and Insights Document. This document should look very similar to last year. If you're familiar with the report, it is largely made up of required communications. A couple of highlights from the report on page six is the section on internal controls. So we do issue a material weakness over internal controls related to financial reporting. That is because we do prepare the financial statements on behalf of the city. That is very common for municipalities of your size and your accounting staff. We did not have any material adjusting journal entries to report, so those, you will not see that in this report, which is very good, should give you a lot of confidence in the work that's being done in the city's finance department. A couple of other items to mention, page 11 has a link to our website. If there are other matters outside of the audit, you may find of interest out on that link. And then the last section of the report is really geared towards the subsequent years of 2024, and if there are any matters in that list that you think we should be aware of during the year, feel free to reach out to any one of us on the city's audit team, and our contact information is in this report as well. So we'd love to hear from you if there's anything that you think we should be aware of for planning for 2024. And now getting into the financial highlights or the numbers for the year. So those 2023 financial highlights we put together for purposes of this meeting, page one of that report is looking at your general fund results. As a reminder, the general fund is your primary operating fund of the city, and we are looking at fund balance. So that is equity in simplified terms. We're talking assets minus liabilities. So this first chart compares your fund balance in total at the top, 13.3 million at the end of 2023 to the prior year. So an increase of just under $2 million in your general fund. Looking at the bottom of the chart and working our way up, we've got non-spendable fund balance of about 1.3 million. That's very consistent to last year, made up of mostly inventory and prepaid. It's called non-spendable because you can't use that to pay your bills. Restricted fund balance of about $205,000. That's really similar to last year, an assigned, or, excuse me, assigned fund balance of about 858,000 related to budget carryforwards to 2024. So as a reminder, assigned fund balance is money that you've earmarked for specific purposes. If you want to change your mind, you can always undo those assignments. And that leaves you with unassigned fund balance of about $10.9 million at the end of the year, which unassigned fund balance we'll look at more on the next page, but that is not earmarked for any specific purpose. That is your reserve fund. And then looking at the summarized income statement below the chart, you had planned for a balanced budget with your final budget, and your actual results were a net income of about just under $2 million. If you wanted to find the details of, you know, what is causing that variance, you could find that starting on page 80 of the financial statements. A couple of things that I'll note, revenues and other financing sources, your investment income was up quite a bit compared to last year. That's really consistent. We're seeing that in other municipalities as well. And then expenditures and other financing uses, there were savings, I would say primarily in public safety, public works. So moving on to page two, we are still looking at the general fund, still talking about fund balance. We're looking at that unassigned general fund balance piece, your reserve fund, and we are taking that compared to the subsequent year's budgeted expenditures, so that we can compare against your policy. And you can see since 2020, really, that metric has been trending upwards at 36.7% for 2023. You are in line with city policy, and this is a very healthy reserve balance, so that is good news. Page three, we are going to take a look at general obligation debt. So as a reminder, this is the debt that will be repaid with tax levy. A few things mapped out on this chart, we've got the top line trending upward. That is your state statutory debt limit, which as a reminder, that's 5% of your equalized value. So always a good sign to see that number trending upwards. The faint line in the middle is your policy limit, which, let's see, 10% below the median value for comparable municipalities. So that value for this year was just over 77 million, and your actual general obligation debt outstanding is that bottom red line at just over 49 million at the end of the year. So the actual debt outstanding up slightly from last year, though your margins are growing between your policy and your state statutory debt limit, so that is good to see. And you are well within your state statutory debt limit. A couple of additional pieces of information below the chart, the general obligation debt, it shows you there the breakdown between your city and utility funds. It's mostly related to your city funds. There is no revenue debt outstanding. That wouldn't count against your debt limit, but just a reminder that you don't have this type of debt in your utility funds. And then the last column is sort of these other financing mechanisms, leases, subscription-based IT arrangements, and finance purchases. So that's another $1.7 million in long-term obligations. And then the link at the bottom is just if you're interested in more data, that website, the Wisconsin Policy Forum, has all kinds of different data and tools that you can use to compare against other municipalities in Wisconsin. Moving on to page four, we've plotted out here your debt service to non-capital expenditures. So debt service is what you're spending on principal and interest. This is limited to your city funds. And then comparing against non-capital expenditures to try and get sort of those stable operating costs. And your ratio at the end of 2023 is 21.7%, up slightly from last year, but really, we've seen that trend downward since 2021, or I guess since 2019, trending downward, leveling off at 2021. All five years, you've been over your policy maximum of 20%, but really, you are in line with comparable metrics for municipalities of your size in Wisconsin. So from my point of view, no real concerns there. Your actual debt spending below the chart in 2023 was actually down from the prior year. It's just the reduced spending and some of those other categories are kind of pushing that metric upward. So page five, we are now looking at your water utility results. As a reminder, this water utility is, the rates are governed by the PSC of Wisconsin. We've got mapped out here on this chart your operating revenues in blue versus your operating expenses in red. About $1 million in operating income for this fund, a healthy margin, I would say, for the year. Below the chart, we've got your unrestricted cash reserves. So we look at that compared to your revenues, so what you would bring in a year. And so you've got about a year of revenues sitting in your unrestricted cash reserves, which is very healthy. And then your debt, debt funding of your plant is at 8%, and I would say no concerns with the level of debt funding there. What I take from this is you've got a lot of flexibility. Should you have capital needs, you could pay with cash. You have room to borrow, and your operating income's looking really healthy. And then lastly, moving to your sewer utility results, similar information here. This utility is not governed by the PSC. We do have a little bit of a health called upside-down operating year here. You had about a $210,000 net loss where your operating expenses exceeded operating revenues, but new sewer rates were approved in 2024, so I expect that to correct itself in 2024. When we look at your unrestricted cash reserves, very healthy cash reserves at 26 months there, so even more healthy than your water utility. And then lastly, the investment in capital, the bar graph is a little out of whack there. The percentages are right, so just 1% debt-funded plant, which again, just gives you a lot of flexibility, I would say, between the low levels of debt, the healthy cash reserves, and what should be improved operating results with the new rates going forward. So before I open it up for questions, just certainly want to thank Kerry and team for all the work that they put in in preparation for our audit, always prepared and always responsive with questions and things, which makes our job easier and more enjoyable. So thank you so much. Any questions that I can answer?
With no questions, I'll say thank you very much for, A, the thoroughness of your report, and B, the lack of thoroughness in the highlights that you deliver that made it very simple for all of us to understand what it is all contained therein. And again, we appreciate your partnership and continued work with our team. It really does take a team to put together this type of report, and I appreciate all the work that you guys do as well in that regard. So thank you very much for that. The third item before the Finance Committee this evening is Award Q 2402, Citywide Safety Study, Pedestrians, Bicycles, Electric Scooters. Hello again, Max.
Hello. Thank you. So this is an item to award a contract for citywide safety study for pedestrian, bicycle, and electric scooters. In August 2022, the City of West Bend entered into a state municipal agreement with the Department of Transportation through their TAB program, the Transportation Alternative Program, to fund this study. So it's in order to use data, collect data, and use the data to help prioritize infrastructure upgrades at different intersections for those users, pedestrians, bicycles, and electric scooters. We published a request for proposals for those services, and we received two proposals. They are listed in the memo, and they are both within the amount of funding that we would receive through that grant, through the TAB grant. I would like to point out that this is a reimbursement grant, so the city will have to cover the cost first, and then, once the task is completed, submit invoices to the DOT for reimbursement. So the, sorry, the fund balance is what will be used for this project, but 80% of whatever the city will spend will come back through the reimbursement process. Also, this will need to be a three-party contract with the DOT, the consultant, and the city. And so as we've done in the past, we are requesting that the board and council authorize the city engineer to sign the contract once it's ready instead of... city engineer to sign the contract once it's ready instead of coming back to get permission at that time.
Thank you. Max, can I entertain a motion? Thank you, Alderman Allen. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Buchlick. Any questions? I just have one, Max. Is, is this a typical, this reimbursement grant, is that a typical type of an approach with these types of programs through the state?
So for this program, it is.
Okay.
There are programs where all the invoices go through the DOT, they pay the invoices and then they invoice the city for the share, whether it's 20% or 10%. Other programs are set up this way for reimbursement. I'm told for this one, this is the setup.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Sure.
Max, what's the timeframe on this?
So the study would take place starting this summer fall into next year. That's the schedule that we anticipate. All this will be finalized in our discussion negotiation with the DOT and the consultant. But pretty much it should be done by June of next year at the latest. Then we would have the results and then we would be able to prioritize the projects that we could implement in the future. The city is planning on applying for more funding, federal funding for the construction, for implementation of these projects. But this study will help us identify those projects, identify the cost and then prepare for those future applications.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Max? If not, we've got a motion in the second. All those in, in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much, Max.
Thank you.
There being no further business before the finance committee adjourns chair.
Good evening. Again, it is Monday, June 17th, 2024, and this is a meeting of the common council of the city of West Bend. More than 24 hours in advance of this meeting, notice of the time, place, date and subject matter of the meeting was posted in accordance to Wisconsin state statutes. Clerk, can you confirm this meeting was properly posted?
Yes, it has been.
Thank you. Invite you to join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. We recognize a quorum of our full council here tonight with Alderman Allen calling in from, I think, the state of Washington, Mark. Thank you very much for calling in tonight.
Thank you.
Good. All right. Our first item of business is approval of our regular meeting common council minutes from June 3rd, 2024.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Buchlick and Alderwoman Sizer. Any comments, questions, corrections? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Our consent agenda, items two through 17, all of these items were just gone through in committee and boards a second ago. Does anybody have any questions or discussions on any item they might want to pull out of the consent? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with items two through 17.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Zingshaim and Alderman Sternig. Any comments, questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Our next item is the ordinance renumbering subchapter two of chapter 13, increasing section 13.10 entitled lead service line replacement. This was also just discussed in, in board 10 minutes ago or so. The reason it's on here is the action item is this is our first reading, as I talked about at our last meeting with the full council here present tonight. If you want to vote on this and vote in favor of it unanimously, then it passes. If not, then we can bring it back at our next meeting and vote on it for our, during a second reading. So that's why it's listed as an action item and I'll let you guys decide if you want to make a motion on this.
I'll make a motion to approve it this meeting.
Thank you, Alderman Buchlick. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Zingshaim. Any comments, questions, discussion? I'll just make a comment. I think it's, this is a great step forward in, in taking out private side laterals. Again, that's the reason this ordinance is, is being put in place here tonight. And with a generous grant from the county, we're able to start tackling some of those on eighth, seventh and eighth, right? If I remember right. So projects are underway. And then as Travis talked about, you know, there's several more of them out there and we certainly hope to get additional funding, whether it's, it's through the county or if it's through the state or the feds or whatever. So that's why this is so important of an ordinance, to be able to literally step foot on private property to replace a private side lateral. So thank you for the motion in the second. Any other comments, questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries and those ordinances are changed in numbering and adopted as new. All right. Our next action item is a resolution in support of an application submitted to the Public Service Commission. That application was submitted by We Energies for the construction of a new service center in the city of West Bend. Just kind of in a nutshell here, We Energies would like to construct a new service center essentially behind Piggly Wiggly and they have to get approval by the Public Service Commission to do that. So our resolution, which I apologize, I didn't print off to read, but it's in your packet, is, is showing the, the PSC our desire and approval that we would like them to do that. So that's what this item is.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Sparts and Alderman Sternig.
Burkequist.
Burkequist. Alderman Sparts and Alderman Burkequist. Any comments on this one, questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. We'll move on to our first report tonight, our plan commission meeting on June 4th, 2024.
I'll take care of that. We met on June 4th and we had a public hearing regarding a subdivision proposal at the end of Clearview and Daisy and the plan commission denied the application for the plan unit and the site plan, requesting a better, a different plan to be proposed. And that was held. There was a conditional use permit that we heard and that was for a two-family residential at 1933 Hickory Street and that was approved. We approved, there was also a public hearing on a vacant lot at 250 Willow Lane that they, he wanted to change it from a single, from a two-family to a single family. It's a kind of a smaller lot and there were some issues there. So we heard the public hearing and after that, everything was pretty good. So we approved it. We approved the site plan for a hangar at 316 Ariel Drive out at the airport. We also approved a site plan for improvements to the property at 1539 North Main Street. There was a certified survey map that was requested for approval on East Washington Street, which is the Samaritan Home, the youth home. And that was passed. That's been changed now with these, with the county dealings with the Samaritan. They wanted to separate that off. So they needed to change that parcel. There was a request for a review of extraterritorial certified survey map at 1707 and 1715 East Decora Road. And basically that split one lot into two. It's the old farm on the corner of Oak and Decora. That was approved. And then a public hearing for a change in the recommended land use from multi-family to two-family at 20, in the 2020 plan for West Bend for half an acre of land at 1904 and 1914 River Drive. That was where the apartment had the fire several years ago, which was a heck of a night. And they are going to convert that from a four-family into a two-family lot. And that was approved. The next meeting will be on July 2nd.
Thank you, Joan. Any questions? If not, we'll move on to our bid board meeting held on June 4th, 2024.
On June 4th, the bid board reviewed and approved in the May 27th meeting minutes and the financial report. Don Fellows, the director of community development, presented on the downtown master plan. The board reviewed, approved the following committee members for the facade grant committee, Mark Allen, Chair, Peggy Fisher, Tony Cable, Jessica Wild, Don Fellows, Tracy Sherlock, and Kevin Steiner. The 2024 bid grant, facade grant application is now available on the website and the deadline is real quick. It is Friday, June 21st, that's this coming Friday at noon. The board also approved the creation of a strategic planning committee. Committee members include Larry Porter, Chair, Tracy Sherlock, Mark Allen, Kevin Schultz, E. Renick and Kevin Steiner. The committee will focus on creating a strategic plan for the business improvement district. Mike Yentz, the director of recreation and forestry, providing an update on the delivery of winter crops, new racing units, which are coming over the next two weeks. They're actually all over downtown right now and I'm hearing raves about those. Two proposals were received from Grace to inspect and replace four overhead cables currently located downtown. We reviewed that and after discussion, the board approved a Department of Public Works proposal to remove the cables at no cost. Leanna Noblock and Bill Butler are co-executive directors of the Bend, shared the success of their recent block party. The next block party is September 5th. Looking forward to it. And the next bid board meeting will be July 2nd at 8:15 a.m. and the council will send it. Any questions?
Very good. Thank you, Mark. We now have an item appropriate for closed session tonight. So I'll read the motion here. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn in a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin state statute section 19.851E, which is deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, namely an offer to purchase land for fire station number one. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Sternig and Alderwoman Sizer. This requires a roll call vote. So I'll call the roll. Alderman Allen. Alderman Zingshaim.
Aye.
Alderman Sparts.
Aye.
Alderwoman Sizer.
Aye.
Alderman Burkequist.
Aye.
Alderman Buchlick.
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Alderman Sternig.
Aye.
All right. We are now in executive session. We do anticipate this being a fairly short closed session tonight and then we will convene back here with some possible action. So we'll keep the cameras rolling and hope to be, to be pretty timely here. So thanks. So, thanks.